Yeah. So what do we have?
So if you'll hit them like when I hit this watch right there.
Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thanks everyone for being here and for those that are. We've got plenty. Feel free to come join us. Let's start out with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we start, are there there any adjustments or additions to the agenda?
There's none from staff. Um, we do have a town manager, Daniel Cobb tonight to do a quick intro since we have a couple of board members. So if you're okay with it, uh, he'll come up with this time.
Absolutely, Mr. Cobb. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you everyone for having me to join in speaking tonight. Again, my name is Daniel Cobb. I'm the town manager here in Mills River and um, I don't typically come to planning board meetings, but we've had a lot of new faces join the board over the last couple of months. So I thought it would be good just to come. Put a face with the name for everybody. Um, I've been in Mills River since July of two thousand fourteen. For a brief period, I was doing Mike jobs and Mike's job in my own. And I am so thankful that Mike is here. Um, as it has made my life exponentially better. So um, as the manager, I'm responsible for the whole organization, everything that we do. Um, in terms of Parks and Recreation, uh, zoning code enforcement, um, work with the fire department and sheriff's office on those contracts that we have with with those groups. Um, so your experts are going to be your department heads. So Mike and Arlie and Sue. And Nicole, um, they're going to ones that if you have a specific question about taxes or planning and zoning, obviously you know where to go. Uh, if you have questions in general about how the town operates, if everyone talked about the budget. If you ever want to know more about how government just acts overall, what we do. By all means, reach out. My email is is the same as Orley and Mike's. It's daniel.cobb@millsriver.org. Um, and you can get my cell phone from from either of them. And uh, I just wanted to come introduce myself, Mr. Abbott. We've not met. Hello. I'm Mr. Kimsey. Good to see you. I know I've seen you at council meetings before. Jim, I've known you. Been around a while. Jeff, good to see you again. Bonnie, good to see you as well. Mr. Cole, we've not met either. So it's a pleasure to meet you here in person and Brian, we've met informally in the past. So it's good to see you again. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's really all I wanted to do. Do you have anything? You want to quiz me about anything?
There's been some kerfuffle about increasing taxes.
Mm hmm.
Over fifty percent.
Mm hmm.
My belief, sure enough, is that if you look at the 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 taxes are based on. The whole value.
Mm hmm.
Staking the value of the property.
That's right.
And if I'm not mistaken. Because of that. We take a look at. What the current value of projected sale value of the house as residents of the property. So we base the taxes on that. Is that correct or is that incorrect?
The way that we calculate the tax rate each year is Henderson County provides us a projection. Of the total tax base for the entirety of the town. So it's. It's real property, which is real estate and houses, and then of course, personal property, which could be a boat or something, and then of course, business personal. And then there's um. Public service properties, which are things like uh, the gas company, Duke and those sorts of things. Um, so we do the math each year. When we get the numbers from the county and and look at our current tax rate. And we look at our. Planned expenditures for the year. And we use the formula to make sure that the revenue that we're going to bring in off the tax rate can cover the expenses. Now, property tax is our largest source of income, which is our only source of income. So we get revenue from sales tax as well. Which is generated in sales in the county. Um, so that that's the second largest um. Uh, revenue sharing that the town has. So yes, to answer your question, the tax rate is based. In part on the value of real estate in the town, but it's also. Uh, impacted by that sales tax number because the higher the sales tax number goes, the less we have to mess with the actual property tax rate.
So what would you say is the. More significant? Of the reason with increases?
Oh, in terms of the property, like the reassessments that just happened. Uh, well, the what you've heard in news recently is a direct result of what's called a revaluation. The county does that every four years. North Carolina, you have to do it at least once every eight years. And um, every county is different. But Henderson County has been on the schedule every four years for some time now. And when they do that, they assess every single property in the in the in the county. I don't know how many tens of thousands there are, but there's a lot and they they assess each one of them. And they try to they try to match the assessed value to the market break value of that home based on sales in the county. Uh, they divide the county into several different neighborhoods. These aren't neighborhoods like a three or four homes, they're larger areas, but they divided based on. Neighborhoods and they come up with um. Some common denominators, if you will, for. Um, factors that go on the calculations of that particular area. And then at the end of that revaluation. We get um, everyone got noticed of notices of new value that came out this year in the county. And we, as an organization, get tax projections about once a month from the tax assessments, tax assessor's office. So the number you heard in the paper initially was, I think, county Y, they want up forty-eight percent, something in that in that neighborhood. Um, and then in Mills River, the latest projection shows shows taxes have gone up around forty percent. Tax value has gone up around forty percent. Now, all things being equal, if your tax rate's ten cents. And your and your value goes up by forty percent, you'd think that. Um, you would lower the tax rate to offset that, and that's what's called a revenue neutral rate. And that's something that we have to calculate every four years during evaluations. Everyone, including county, all jurisdictions across the state, whenever they do this, have to do that. And you publish that rate. And it basically does the value of if you um. Looked at the revenue from the preceding year. And you looked at the current rate. And then you use the new values, what would that rate need to be at to equal the same thing you got last year? It's a little bit more complicated than that, but that's the gist of it. So um, the county, I believe, is committed to lowering the rate because. If you don't lower the rate, it feels like your taxes go up because the value went up. Uh, in most cases, some people they go down, but those are very few and far between. Um, so a lot of jurisdictions will try to offset that increase of value by decreasing tax rate. Does that make sense?
The county has said on record that their rate will be revenue neutral. They only represent.
That's right.
Yeah.
They get assigned assessment, but the county have no say in that.
That may not affect every single property in the same way.
Yeah, whatever the county does. We have no control on it, right?
Right.
But Mills River can. If your home's worth five hundred thousand dollars. What the county has come up with five hundred thousand dollars, and I think I'm rating in Mills River, I use the term millage rate. I don't hear that used much anymore, but uh. Millage rate is nineteen, I think, right now. So if if. Mills River kept it at nineteen, yes, you would have. An increase because if your home was valued at three hundred thousand last year, you'd have a. Uh, substantial increase, but if Mills River Council decides. To go revenue neutral and reduce it down, say, to fifteen or whatever it takes, that's that's what that's where the key is all that, just because. Henderson County decided that your home's worth five hundred thousand dollars, don't mean that you're going to actually get taxed, right? Am I right?
Mm hmm. That's right.
But our town council makes that fun.
Yeah, so every every jurisdiction that's incorporated, so Fletcher, Mills River. Flat Rock, Laurel Park and Hendersonville. All have their own tax rates because they all provide distinct services within their jurisdictions. Um, so you have the town tax rate in our case, and then you have the county tax rate. So everyone in the county pays county tax, only people in Mills River pay Mills River tax. Um, and that nineteen cents that Jim referenced is a combination of. What goes to the fire department and what goes to town in terms of um, general operating revenue. So the. The town um, lowered its rate by a penny four years ago when the last revaluation happened. Fire Department increased their rate. Um, so overall, it was a rate increase, uh, even though the town's rate went down. Um, they're they're two different values and and we we can control that eight cents. The department, fire department's number is different. And that's set by the county commission.
Uh, Dan, what about the county bill? It's right. Do you know if they're gonna drop it? Any to?
I know that they've committed to lowering the rate. I don't know.
They've said on record that they.
Yeah.
Revenue. Problem is they're still in the challenging period. So traditionally, that discussion or the commitment doesn't end until around mid to late June, and they're going to keep that together. They're upset they're not moving that up because there's taking all sorts of tests going on. But the, what are we, eleven cents for the fire department?
Mm hmm.
We, the town council, or the town council doesn't. They can't adjust or.
That's right.
Okay, so the nineteen cents that that includes that.
It it does. That is the effective, the effective tax rate for citizens in Mills River. Uh, but the town can only control, well. The town sets that rate based off what basically provided with by the county. And uh, one thing you mentioned, I wanted to make make sure everyone to aware of is there is an appeal process. If you uh, got your bill or you noticed the value and you think it went way too high or didn't go high enough. Um, you can appeal that with the county and there's an informal appeal process. They have a board that needs and here's appeals. And then if you're not happy with that, you can't take it to the next level and there is a state level. Appeal board. And they do hear cases. We have one happen last year that occurred two thousand nineteen. We just got a resolution on last September, so. Covid had a lot to do with that, but it does make its way through the system. Did I say anything? I wasn't.
All public information.
That's right.
The the bigger housing and businesses we have in Mills River, that contribute to our.
It contributes, it contributes to the tax valuation. Yeah, so like a newer home that, you know, sells for a million dollars, for example, is gonna is gonna add to that bottom line tax valuation. Um, and then that could impact properties within the vicinity that sell around it. Uh, and that's what the county does every four years to try to make sure that. That ratio between the sale and the assessment is as close to one or four the same. As possible. And then with businesses, yes, the biggest thing with businesses is the is the parts of machines within businesses. The actual value of real estate for an industrial user. Uh, of course, does add to the value, but it's it's really the equipment within those facilities that a lot of value can come from. For example, G F Lenomar's equipment is worth. Tens of millions of dollars.
It's tax annual. That's not a full-time building if you don't know that that business pays every year.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Henderson County is required by the state to do this every four years, right?
They're required to do it at least every eight years.
They said eight years.
That's what the statute requires, but this county hasn't adopted the practice of doing it every four years.
It helps.
Yeah.
Doesn't feel good right now, but I've been on the other side of this. When when, you know, twenty ten.
Mm hmm.
And it was the complete opposite conversation we're having right now. Um, so be be thankful to do it every four years.
I know.
It's just a little more right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thanks for coming tonight. Thanks for being here and. Yeah, I'd like to just take a second as the chair to thank you, thank town staff. For the work you do. We are very blessed to have our staff. And when we come here, you know, for a couple of hours. One Tuesday night a month, that doesn't represent the hours and the hours of work that's led up to this. So we do appreciate that. Thank you for what you do.
And and thank you all for your willingness to serve. It's it's not always easy to find volunteers. So I really appreciate the fact that you put your names in the hat. And come here once a month. It's a very important. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and also. To members of the board, thank you for what you do. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I would like to entertain a motion. About the minutes. If anyone would like to make a motion to approve it, but before we do, I would make a request. Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Um. I would ask that when someone makes a motion or seconds it, please say your name because I. I'm still learning for the new folks. Um. I'm still learning and I can't see everyone's name tag and. And Ms. Arlie, it would help her to hear that upfront. So if you would just please say um, your name and then make a motion or. Jeff's making a motion. Hey, this is Jeff. I'd like to make a motion. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Abbott, for your motion. Do we have a second? You.
What's your name?
Mike. Mike. So. Yeah, okay, all those in favor?
Ah.
All right. Okay, it passes. Public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I haven't received none.
Okay, and for anyone who's watching towards the end of the meeting before we adjourn, I'd like to give you another opportunity. If there's something that you've heard that you'd like to comment on just briefly, or if there's anything that comes in that uh, we need to. To read, like to give that other opportunity. Okay. Um, new business. Our first step is to adopt a new meeting schedule. Did I skip the whole? Oh, yes. I I have my notes here. Thanks for keeping me honest. It's the old business, Brian Ross. For those who have forgotten. You're unforgettable, my friend. Um, old business, let's talk about the draft bike and pedestrian plan. Let's review it and if there are any recommendations.
Uh, thanks again, everyone. So just a quick recap, we we brought the draft plan uh, to this board at the last meeting in March. Um, basically for a review and recommendation and after we uh, went through the PowerPoint, it was decided. Um, since it's over a hundred pages, that a little more time for digestion and review would be needed. Um, so I'm not going to go through and summarize my staff report again, um, since that was all on the record last time, but uh, let's just jump in and. Uh, see if anyone has any questions. I I have that same PowerPoint we went through last time. So again, if it's helpful. Um, in terms of pacing things out and and reviewing the different sections or the different proposed routes, I'm I'm happy to do that, but I'll leave it up to the pleasure of the board.
Well.
Okay.
I'm Jim Foster. And uh. I know we postponed last month from talking to this to tonight. And in the meantime, I did get this all printed out and I had some time to uh. Uh. Read it over and think about it. A lot of stuff there, lots of things to be considered. And I would like to, I don't know who 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 produced this, but I've been in advertising for a long time, but it's. It's a very good pamphlet. I'll say that. There's a lot of stuff in there. There's a lot of fluff also as far as I'm concerned. And uh. This is uh, something that. I I agree with some, a lot of the things I've already. Been over. Some of it I don't agree, and I think we need to. Carefully analyze this whole document. I know we're just in a very preliminary stages tonight making the recommendation, but. What we do tonight or and and this council on down the road. Uh. This whole document to me. Uh. It's kind of removes any future. Uh, discussion, I think, if we adopt it as is. That's my opinion. And I would be happy, I've 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 got several pages. I have, and my my questions may seem. Frivolous, but. Things that just came to mind, uh, and I I went through and I'll be glad to take the time tonight, or I'll be glad to postpone it. And take another time to do it, whatever y'all want to do. I'll say I'm I'm here. But it's it's just. Different pages I'd like to, for example, the first thing that and. Struck me is I started going through this. I already knew about, we have about seventy-four hundred. Uh, residents of Mills River, I'm told. And uh. It seems like we got a lot of. Things in this whole document that uh. I don't know what we need in Mills River. Uh, I like Mills River. When I came here seventeen years ago. And I know there's going to be some changes and have been some changes, but. Seeing we've put a lot of time into a comprehensive plan and every time I turn around, we are trying to make a change to it. And the same thing, some some of this, but I just want to point out some things and I don't know what this has, this is called a. Uh, Mills River pedestrian and bicycle plan. Uh, like they go, they list all these, they list for diversity, income and wealth, education, housing. Well, the things that says that I just don't understand. That's on page twenty-one, incidentally. I just don't understand. What it really has to do with whether or not we need. All these bicycle paths. It's several outline proposals in within this document and uh. I I don't know. And I just wanted to start off a discussion. I've got some other pages I can go to.
I can address that first one if you'd like.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so really the the demographic background information, uh, starting on page twenty-one, which again is the. Start of the current conditions section is really just to do an assessment of the town. I mean, we. When we did the comprehensive plan, a lot of that research, and again, it was before I was here, but was done in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Now, again, I don't, I don't know where the consultants pulled this data from, but again, before implementing a plan in in the community, you want to know who's in the community and that and that's really the only purpose for this is to get a snapshot of Mills River. As we are now to the best degree with the data we have. And that's why it's included because, you know, when you look at connecting different parts of the community with bicycle or pedestrian infrastructure, you don't want to leave out. I mean, underserved groups is one example, but um. Specific neighborhoods or demographics, so that's why it's included.
Okay, and. You 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 gotta hit a mail on one thing now, but I'll bring it up now. Uh. I don't remember. When this. Survey was conducted. You said it was before you came, I think.
It was conducted uh, while I was the zoning administrator.
Yeah, uh, you know, it kind of must have went over my head because I don't, I didn't get involved in that and didn't. And my my question, and I know that's somewhere else in my notes. But my question is on that is how many people actually participated in that survey, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can find out.
Yeah, I I I think somewhere I was told it was a very small number. To to represent.
It always is.
Unfortunately.
Huh?
It's it always is a small sample.
Yeah, well, I know.
You're three of us.
GMO, I think we need more support. Why ain't there a bicycle group here? You know, I'm like GMO, there's there's no support. I see nobody. I mean, here's not right by me. I mean, I do, but I'm not going to get up on the highway and ride.
Well, this.
To do things in person isn't very common right now.
Uh huh. This, I guess, I guess I should go through the background because this project was not initiated by a bicycle group. It was initiated by town staff. So the the manager has been applying. Um, for these grants for a couple of years and we were awarded it in twenty twenty. So again, the pound, the the town paid minimal taxpayer funds for this because N C D O T is 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 putting.
Taxpayers know about it though, shouldn't they have a second minute?
Of course, that's why we did public input in the survey and we did stakeholder groups. We did meetings in the park. I mean, they're they're, yeah, we didn't ignore the citizens.
It's on the website.
Part of, yeah, part of any plan is is having public input and that was done by the consultants. Yeah.
Wouldn't this part of the online questionnaires or, you know, that people could uh, have say so in or give input to the group that things that they wanted some time ago?
Yeah, I mean, I I can look into the details of the survey, but as far as I remember, it was, there was a website that was built just for this purpose. Um, where citizens were directed to. I think it was advertised in our newsletter and on Facebook. And and beyond that, I'll go, you know, look at the actual survey results and I'm happy to report back to you with that. Yeah.
Well. Uh, continue on. On page forty-one, it says steering committee and and this is one thing. Simple red flag with me. The intent of the project steering committee was to provide a voice of the community at a smaller target to scale. What does that mean?
So late, this is just an example, but later in our agenda tonight, um. The the, at the board's pleasure, they're appointing members to the land preservation committee because councils identified that as something uh, the town wants to pursue. When this project kicked off, and I believe it's part of the the Department of Transportation agreement. Um, the contractual agreement for the plan is the town had to put in place a steering committee for this project. So. Individuals um, that represented normal citizens, business owners. Um, there was someone from a, I can't remember the name, but from a bicycle coalition group that was involved as well. Uh, I think an employee from Sierra Nevada, you know, participated. Um, and again, the the full list of steering committee members, I believe, is in the the front of the document. Um.
It is. I was on the committee.
Yes, there. On page five. So if you're interested in their backgrounds, uh, everyone's listed right there. I can just read it. Daniel Cobb, town manager. Myself, the planning director. Nicole Sweater, Parks and Recreation Director. Stacy Taylor, the Community Health Director for Henderson County Department of Public Health. Ruth Williams of Mills River Life Enrichment Center. Donna Chappas of Sierra Nevada Brewing, Scott Moore of Henderson County Public Schools. Jeff Young, lifelong resident. Elizabeth Jackson from the Riveter. Che Davis, representing the agricultural community. Jim Player, representing the Henderson County Sheriff. Uh, Jody Grabowski, representing Blue Ridge Bicycle Club and Behavioral Health System Coordinator of Henderson County Department of Public Health. Selena Einwechter, owner of Tiffany Hill Ben Breakfast, Jeff Moore, representing the planning board. Adam Wallace, also representing Sierra Nevada. Uh, John Abian Cooley, the senior planner from Henderson County, and then Tristan Winkler from our uh, French Broad Metropolitan Planning Organization. So that was the makeup of the committee. And again, the the intent behind it was to have a diverse group of people to provide, you know. Diverse input. But again, that doesn't take the place of the public input outreach or the outreach that was done to the citizens of the town.
The report itself is a pretty standard report for this. They, this is how, if you pick up one from Fletcher, one in Hendersonville, they're all going to look pretty much the same. There's going to be some differences based on the individual town. Makeup, populations, et cetera, but for the most part. They're all going to say. More facilities, better facilities, accessible facilities. And it's a big part of getting the N C D O T. If if we decide as a town, we want to sidewalk along NC two eighty. We put that in. Our expense. If we have a plan in place, which recognizes there should be a sidewalk or bike facilities, et cetera. Along NC two eighty. And N C D O T comes in and does a project on NC two eighty. Then they follow the plan, which they've approved, and they will install the infrastructure and the town either has no cost or. A cost share is generally twenty percent. So it greatly. Is is every road in Mills River suitable for a sidewalk and a bike lane? No. But there are some that would greatly benefit. You know, we. Who rides a bike around here? Well, I live on Schoolhouse Road. I'm not riding a bike on Schoolhouse Road. There are brave people that do. And if I get behind one, I slow down and I got their back. And I I make sure that at least for me, they're safe. But. If there were the facilities in place, then I might ride my bike. I might want to ride from my house over here and enjoy the park. And there are places that would then be available to me because I'm not a great rider. I I'm I'm not good. I need a wide road. I need something that's idiot proof and um.
So while you're on that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's fierce. Okay, they come up and put sidewalks down power.
Right. Right.
Will the bicycles be required to ride that, will they get tippy headed if they're back on our highways? Or how's that?
That is a great question.
We we still have to look out for that.
Usually bicycles don't ride on the sidewalks, there are places where it's legal.
Yeah.
And do we, would we want it to not be legal? I don't know. But a bicycle is a vehicle, it's not a motor vehicle, but it is a vehicle. And they are allowed to ride on a state road.
State has a share of the road. That that's not something we can be able to change locally, except for your pedestrian dedicated side.
Right, but if you, a- and there are people in that ride bicycles who feel comfortable in traffic. Now, on a fifty-five mile per hour road, probably not. If you build a bike path or a multi-use path, I would say ninety percent of them are go- or ninety-nine percent are to be on that path. But on a thirty mile per hour road or a twenty-five mile per hour road, which we don't have any, but if we did, they would probably choose, some would choose to ride in traffic because they feel like once they establish themselves in that line of traffic and they can keep their speed up pretty well, you know, they they are, they're better off.
And if improvements are being made to a particular stretch, and there's a plan in place, uh, for bicycle and walkways or maybe just bicycle or maybe walkway, but talking about bicycles, seems to me they were put in a narrow lane, like I've seen in many places, with a white line and maybe bicycle, you know, identification down along that lane. Obviously would have to require a wider of the expansion of sure to do something like that. Uh, and if N C D O T were involved in that, then again, that that would be considered. And if it wasn't no cost to us, we might have to pay twenty percent.
That's correct.
Whatever that is. Um, I can't imagine them putting in a walkway and allowing bicycles to be on it. If there's bicycle intent there, I would imagine they would uh, put the bicycle lane in there.
Yes.
That would have to be a part of the widening of modification of the road.
And that would be, yes, sir, and that would be on the plans that are presented in the public meetings and the plans that would be voted on by town council that, yes, we support this, we don't support this, and um, if there's right of way required and and some roads have wider right of way than others, Schoolhouse Road, for instance, has a certain right of way. Uh, N C two eighty has a much larger right of way. And there are places where the right of way is already there, where infrastructure can be built, that makes makes it a lot easier. Places where that is not available, there may be, like you say, a wider shoulder. It may be, for instance, we talked about on um North Mills River Road, a ten-foot multi-use path going all the way up to the campground, it's not necessarily practical. Sure, we'd love to have it, but is there right of way, would there ever be right of way? However, there may be places where a turnout can be built so that ride your bike, people behind you, you pull over, you let them get by, then you get back out and to make it um, something along those lines, just shorter pieces, but the the intent of the plan is what can we do to improve it? You know, we may not be able to get it all, but we can get some and we can get it incrementally and keep building it as the town grows, as the the need grows.
And we can't get the funding until we adopt a plan.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Now, the plan's not gonna be written in stone, my understanding, it's not gonna be, it can be amended as time goes, if something comes up. We're not, I don't believe we're agreeing to something today that can never be changed, is that correct?
Exactly, this is a high level concept plan, so again, it's it's our first time conducting public outreach to the community about bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure ever. So we're we're taking this initial public input and the input from the steering committee members, and this is our is our first document of this type for the town. Um, but it it doesn't hold us to build anything, it doesn't uh dedicate money for any project. Uh, you can call it, it's just lines on a piece of paper, so if D O T does come through and they build um, a roadway project that overlaps with one of these identified projects, we have an opportunity to either not or to participate as part of that.
Yep, if you don't mind me adding something.
Don't mind a bit.
Billy, I don't, we don't know each other, so if I'm reading this wrong, please correct me, but sensing a little doubt either the integrity of the information being put in front of us. My experience, these firms have no agenda. This is public, well, first of all, it's it's a snapshot, I think Michael chose the right word of what what the town looks like. I get it, not enough people respond, that's always the case. Three, three of us sitting here are on multiple boards in this town, you know why? That's who shows up. So it's not a big enough, as as large of a sampling as we'd like, but I I I promise you, in my experience, these firms are not pushing it agenda. This is public feedback, even if it's only from two people.
Yeah, I know this firm, even though they are competitors, and in any town other than Mills River, I certainly wouldn't choose them to do a traffic study. But in all seriousness, they are a very professional firm and I know I know all the individuals involved and, you know, I would yes, I I can vouch for their integrity in this.
What's your next question, Mr. Foster? Hit us with it.
Well, overall, the concept, you know, sounds great. I just have this one thing, you know, that I mentioned before. We uh we try to maintain a rural atmosphere and control the growth. Well, some would say we haven't done a good job at all of it. And but every time I turn around, we're making exceptions uh, to allow something that wasn't allowed. And uh, th- this is still, Mills River is gonna be Mills River, the size no matter what, we're pretty much locked in, I think, al- almost all the way around.
Geographically?
Geographically, yes. And uh, I'd like to see it remain that way, I'd like to see it. And we don't need a lot of things, somewhere in this uh project here, it uh talks about connecting us with some outside facilities or trails, if you will, I'm certainly not in favor of that. You know, I I see some very good places in Mills River. Uh, that, an additional trail or walking trail or whatever you want to call it, would be very nice. But I'm not in favor of connecting it with uh, the the others, because I think that's gonna bring in eventually, I probably won't be around to see it, but it's gonna bring in eventually uh, some undesirable effects. So
What kind?
That's why I, that's why I have a problem with this blanket saying, okay, well, yeah, we support this, no, I I don't support it as is.
Uh, I'm just gonna push you on that, Jim, what kind of undesirable effects, because in the planning field, neighborhood connectivity is a good thing.
Well, you're gonna make it, um we can look at any big city. Uh, and uh, I I come from down in Georgia, as you, most of you know, my 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 hometown used to be kind of like Mills River was when I came, that's why I was attracted to it. And nowhere like that today, so my my second hometown is Columbus. And we've, we told, we kept talking about, we need to bring in this, bring in that, bring in it's a mess today, that town is too. So, you know, my thought is, if we can keep Mills River, Mills River uh, without making it easy, and when I say making it easy, I'm I'm referring to the same thing of proven projects uh, exceptions to the rules or regulations. We just, uh, if we, we tie this trail, a trail to another trail, and and it makes it easy for more trail, we talk about traffic, we got a traffic problem in Mills River, yes. Well, if you had all these trails in effect, you're gonna have a lot more traffic, uh, all the people that use it are not gonna ride in from somewhere, they're gonna drive in and park. And so, you know, that's where I'm coming from, you know, but that's what we're here for, just discussion.
Discussion, yeah, and the and the free exchange of ideas. And, you know, we
I have a couple of questions and comments, I mean, it's very extensive report, a lot of work went into it. Um, and it does detail each project and whether it's multi-use or shoulder widening. One question I have is, what's the difference between between a bicycle lane and shoulder widening, just the markings on that path or?
I believe so.
Yes.
Mister Mister Moore would probably know in more detail, but it I believe it's just the stripe, right?
It's just the stripe and there are, um, you can have a wide shoulder, four foot wide shoulder, generally a bike lane is gonna be seven feet wide.
Okay.
Because the first two feet is considered a gutter pan, you know, you curb and gutter, even on a shoulder section where you don't have a gutter, that first two feet, yeah, people are kind of a little bit worried about riding there, me especially, as clumsy as I am. The inside two feet, that's closer to the traffic, that's a little bit dicey, so that you take those four feet out, you got about three feet to ride your bike and you got clearance from the cars and that's not gonna be appropriate everywhere.
Yeah, and that makes, I was just curious on that.
Sure.
Um, again, they will have their opinion on some of the social commentary in the front of the report, but the gist of the report to me, Michael, if I'm correct, is safety and enjoyment, right? Creating these paths for safe use of bicycles, um, walking and that sort of thing, but also a safety factor, so that, again, we're not on, you know, busy road, as you said, I was on my way here today, I don't know if this is a sign or not, but I got behind thirty bicycles.
Oh, huh, yeah.
Four wide on Schoolhouse Road.
Yes, sir.
And so, one of my comments is, if we have bicycle lanes and we spend a million dollars for that, is that going to alleviate that? They're not required to ride, obviously, and that's where I think, so it's just a comment. You know, I I just don't yeah, I don't, and I don't know that, I don't know that, and so if it's safety and enjoyment, then my biggest question is, and we don't know the answer specifically for every one of these projects is, but what do we anticipate other than the state coming in and widening the road or whatever, what do we anticipate the source of revenue being used to fund these projects?
That would be years down, I mean, I can't even have a conjecture.
I mean, general tax.
That would, I mean, that would be a council decision, you know, possibly years down the line, when we do have a project that, you know, a D O T project that overlaps with one of these um, identified projects in the plan. So I mean, there's just too many variables to to give an estimate, because it would be based on, uh, you know, tax sharing agreements with D O T. You know, if additional right of ways required to put in uh whatever the recommended facilities are. Um, so I I I won't throw a guess out for that, that would be up for uh
As we go.
Current council at the time, again, this is more just high level concept lines on a map, so when we, if and when we get to that point, we're prepared. Um, but the other purpose of the plan too is that we are, the only facilities um that are off-street facilities for recreational enjoyment in our twenty-two square miles of town are right here in this park.
Right.
There's, there's no other sidewalks, um, or or separated bike paths anywhere else in the town. Um, it is an amenity that, you know, residents have said they wanted. It's identified as uh objectives, you know, the, for the town to accomplish in our comprehensive plan, and again, that that's why staff has pursued this, because it's something we don't provide.
And I would just make, again, this is more of a comment, maybe it needs to comment down the road when projects are approved and implemented, but you know, I I would think we would want to look at who's enjoying these bike paths and walkways, is it residents of Mills River? Then, you know, should residents fund that, but if it's folks from outside of Mills River who are enjoying most of the paths and that sort of thing, it should probably be a different source of revenue, that's just a comment thought.
This for the community, or is this for bringing in more tourists?
Yeah, I mean, you can't really, yeah, you can't control that, but we would, I don't know if we'd have any way to know that. Um, but that would just be a a comment that if most folks are driving here, parking here, they're using these wonderful, this beautiful area, obviously, and using their bikes and trails, but they don't live here and they're, but they're using it, then you gotta look at what the source of the revenue is to pay for those paths, maybe it's not residents, maybe it's the businesses who benefit, you know, from the folks who arrive.
And we have that same conundrum with our parks and recreation, because I guarantee you, there's not just taxpayers using using this park here, but um, you know, our our elected officials constantly dedicate taxpayer dollars towards that, so again, that that's a decision for the elected officials to make at that time.
Michael, I think you've said this before, so please correct me if this isn't accurate, if one of the main objectives here is to be ahead of future D O T changes. So the answer to the question, if we, if we're not ahead of it, is we either pay one hundred percent ourselves, or we scratch it in the future. In other words, if we miss the opportunity to piggyback a D O T project, that answer is really simple.
Yeah, that's correct, it's either no, it's not happening, or the town's paying for the full cost, whereas if we have a plan in place, there are options on the table.
Obligate us to 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 execute, pick a bullet point here.
No, there's, there's no obligation to any project identified.
All it is, is that we're ahead of that, so if we do decide to do it as a town, we're not putting the entire bill.
And I I'm familiar with Wedgwood, because it's near where I live. Suppose there was a plan, in the plan, sidewalk was identified down Schoolhouse. So the young people that live in Wedgwood, the kids that go to Mills River, we may not see five and six-year-olds walking to school, but what we might see is a parent with a group of young people that go to Mills River. We call those in in Asheville, we call them walking school buses, where, I know, I just moved my my, uh, a walking school bus, so that's a chance for a parent to walk with those children to school. And I don't know that I would recommend that now on Schoolhouse. Um, just because of the amount of traffic, but that's something could be done in the future, and is it easy to walk around Mills River? It's not really easy.
That was one, it's a good point, because one of the top points out of there, I believe there was ten, was connectivity for the students, it actually wasn't, the longer, more expensive bike trails and connection were the bottom, lower down, the burn couple were the students, you're absolutely right.
I mean, at some point
Old school district.
Sure, at some point, if you're here and you want to get to the trail that goes to Brevard, there's no connectivity. And we, this plan would not address connectivity outside of town limits. But if we made it to the town limit, then the county may pick it up and connect it at some point.
And it might tie into the Acusta Trail, obviously, because it's been built right now.
So.
Uh, I would have a
They spend dollars here, we get the sales back.
Right, and that shouldn't be tied into that, right? Yeah, exactly.
I also have a question, Mike, uh, the grant you mentioned.
How do we get angles this full, man, you can't get any.
Uh, people are coming, I I don't know how to, I I help you with that.
The money part, I can't see the money part, it's, like he said, it's not small in the river, we're looking at the dollar set. I don't see that. I'm sorry.
Mike?
Yes, why?
The grant you mentioned, that was just to write up this plan, right?
That's correct, yeah, so the the town applied for a grant through N C D O T to get this plan.
Yeah.
And I can't remember our exact match, but the Blue Ridge Bicycle Club, I think donated twenty-five hundred dollars to lower our match, so do you remember, Jeff, is is our contribution twenty-five hundred?
It was either twenty-five or five thousand, they either paid half.
Yeah, I read somewhere, I think somewhere in that neighborhood, yes, I'm familiar with.
But the the town has only a couple thousand dollars in this, or I think what is like a thirty to forty thousand dollar document.
Um, that's correct.
Just to, just to put something out there, so while you all were discussing, I was trying to find the survey responses, um, I and I can't find the summary, but I did find an email from our consultants that a week before the survey closed, they had a hundred and ninety-one responses, so let's just say with another week, rounded up to two hundred about.
So the plan is not forcing us to put in sidewalks, it's not forcing us to do things, it's providing ways to, once, when we identify these, these places, that we want the improvements. The way to help facilitate that with not just town money. It's a vision that you know, walking and and riding bikes are legitimate ways to get around, I mean, everybody drives a car. When I go to Asheville, I drive a car. But are there places around here that would be convenient to walk to? Right now, no, because you're walking on a shoulder and trying to not get hit. But if there are facilities available, places it would be convenient to walk to, walk to.
Right.
It's not gonna be every road, it's not gonna be everywhere, but there are places where it makes sense and places where it just doesn't now. So, Mr. Foster, have you got a few more, let's love to hear your ideas.
Well, uh, uh,
So we can
Of course, the one thing in the back of my mind, it keeps coming up to build these, like I said, several of them, I would be a hundred
Of course, the one thing in the back of my mind that keeps coming up to build these, like I said, several of them, I would be a hundred percent in favor of them. Several of them I would be a hundred percent against. But uh, it all boils down to the fact, if you build them, uh, there's going to be some private property rights involved somewhere along the line. And what are you going to do? Are you going to condemn more private property to do it or what? Uh, now I know DOT I hear, I think when they do one ninety-one, there's going to be a path there. So let DOT pay for it. Good. Uh, and that's my thing. If 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 DOT controls all the roads, they all state roads. If they want to do something, do it. Why should we have to pay twenty percent? They control the road anyway. They control and they do what they want to, pretty much. So I I that's really, um, it's the way it writes, I'm not in favor.
Um, in my opinion, I I don't believe that property rights, I I don't foresee people having their house condemned to build a sidewalk. Um, I think that the places where we would see sidewalks would be in areas where the right of way is available. For a multi-use bike path, a multi-use path, which is both bicycles and pedestrians that can, that can all be on that path. As part of a project, if there's right of way needed, then it's up to the DOT to get it. It's not, not just condemnation, they do offer money, right? But condemnation is a last resort. Um, I don't know that land has been condemned to provide a multi-use path. I I'm I'm not aware of that.
Uh, they may not have, but they they could, just like they condemn property right out here on one ninety-one. Uh, build, widen this road. And in my opinion, as most of you know, uh, I've argued against that from day one. I think if they would have just looked at Howard Gap Road and did the same thing over here, we'd be in good shape. Because Howard Gap Road was a nightmare before they did, they did the widening project. Howard Gap Road has a nice bike path and not nice white right. And they, that would have worked fine, I hear, but no, we're going to have a four-lane road. And had to condemn some property to get it. And change the whole landscape of Mills River.
Okay. So do we wish to entertain a motion to support the bike and pedestrian plan? Do we want to put it aside and discuss it some more? Do we want to not support? I believe now would be a good time to to take a motion, make a motion of any of those options. We.
Jeff, can I get one last thought?
I, that would be great.
I really feel that need, everyone need to remember, this isn't a decision or a single thing or a single penny or a single condemnation or any of that. Um, as Mike said, it's the, you know, if you know the speed of the DOT, any of these things are years away. The nearest one is years away. And I I think that would be that as the demographics, if you read those first few pages, this population is young. And 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 they're much younger than, you know, Henderson. Uh, there are more kids coming, there's more neighborhoods coming. If you haven't driven through Mills River crossing over here, uh, and even though it's not inside the town limits, you know, Tabby Dairy is going to impact sales taxes, it's going to impact usage over here. Uh, I I don't think, uh, I I I'm sorry, I do believe that having something in place for them in the future to make a quicker decision when it's needed is what this provides. I really feel if if the current, if, I'm sorry, the future town council and population wants to do one of these things and they want to spend twenty percent of it, then make that decision then because there's tools here so you can make a decision as opposed to not being able to make a decision at all because there's no sign there.
And just one other thing, you you can recommend modifications to the plan as well. So you your recommendation, although it's not required as part of this adoption process, you know, will be presented to council. So if for some reason the planning board has feedback about specific projects, about specific parts of the plan, I'm here to take that down. And again, if if you want to include that as part of a a motion for whatever it may be, um, that would be communicated to to council.
Mike, can I ask you a few questions, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Jeff and I just disclosing, we were at the Parks Committee meeting and they went through this the other day. And so we were at the benefit of listening to multiple conversations, perspective on that. Uh, and they did. Am I allowed to say that what what they decided to do with it, their decision?
Public meeting.
Okay, so it they they pushed it through recommendation as as it is uh to the town council. Did any other committees?
No, we.
He's been in front of me and the major, those the two that.
No, we we've just brought this to the planning board and to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Um, again, basically to involve you all in the process, but um, the the goal is to have this plan before council and to have some type of decision made before the end of the fiscal year.
So my my reason for bringing that up is again, reminding everyone here, this is, this is this kind of commitment. The town council will actually then do what we've been doing. And and even when they commit to it, it's still not spending a penny.
Okay. And then when something is brought to them from NCDOT, there's the opportunity to look at it and modify.
That conversation can continue because this is there. Without this, the conversation is dead.
Cause DOT, they're not going to force it on you. So.
And while we got a current plan, would be the time to do it.
That's correct. So then NCDOT may say, well, we want to build this facility. What does your plan say? And if we don't have a plan, then.
For the record, Jim, I don't agree with every, some of those things I would pull it apart. It's not a dictator position on that.
But but the, if these are approved, I'll just clarify for me, if these, if this is approved, right? And again, it's not even required, you know, that we do do that, but each project as it comes up would come before the town council, public would have input on all of that again anyway. So this isn't a blank check to add up all of these estimated dollars and we're going to go for it. It's just a matter of saying, hey, we need to put a plan. I traveled out west by road net last year. It was a long trip, okay? I knew where I was going, but I didn't take the same route, right? I adjusted as I went because the GPS told me I needed to. So, but I had a, I had a plan, right? So this is just a plan. And then we'll implement it as as the opportunity presents itself.
Right.
And so the public will have input all along the way when the dollars come to be spent. And I also, you know, feel like we should in the sense that we do have those two sources of revenue. So thanks for clarifying that. Both sales taxes, which are paid by anybody who visits or who is here, and then the revenue from 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 residents.
Angels will get competition again, actually. They're.
Absolutely.
That's what traffic there is being watched.
And and none of these may get built too. I mean, that's a realistic option. We, you know, we've got the widening project coming down with Haywood Road, but I mean, there is the possibility that DOT may not identify a project in the coming ten to fifteen years that overlaps with any of these. And it would be on future councils, you know, to look at this plan and revisit it if they see the, saw the need to to build that type of.
I believe the only one that could possibly be urgent at all is, give it another language, the island in the middle of one ninety-one for the student crossing. If, you know, you know, you're, yeah, that's the only one that could possibly be anywhere near it.
Pedestrian refuge.
There are refuges, that's where it's looking. Uh, no, I'm two eighty. If they, in the future, if they were to cut from MRS from Millburg School through, at this time, I believe it's Van Wiggert. If that were, two eighty would need a a revenue, but that's the only thing I see remotely here. These other ones. Not unless I'm missing something.
Well, we can continue discussion next meeting. Um, this, you know, this is something we we don't have to rush. We. We don't have to decide tonight. This is, you know, we are giving our support. And if we're not comfortable with that, then let's keep talking. Um, if there are changes we need to make or we, I would be more than happy to wait a month for everyone to come together, put your changes down, and then we'll give them to Mike so that he can take those and and submit those. I've read the plan. I I agree with the plan. There are some changes that could be made. I have no problems uh making some changes, making some edits here and there. But the overall plan itself, I would be in support of. But that's just my opinion based on my reading and my my experiences.
One other question. I guess it's conceivable as well. There's something, whether it be a, a, you know, shoulder widening, a bike lane or or greenway, whatever, that could be built at some point in the future that's not even in here, right? So this doesn't limit us either. Okay, alright.
Of course, my thoughts tonight was to get some discussion going, which we did. And uh, I still have reservations, as I said, yeah, I just, my opinion is put it off for one more month and come back with some recommendations for changes next month. Specific recommendation. And then I would vote for it, I guess. Then I I would be, I want to tell you, I'm I'm a no tonight.
Would it, would it be acceptable for us to say about um sometime in the next two weeks? I I don't want to just look at it. I mean, I would, I would be okay. We, we don't have to support this tonight, next month or even the next month.
Do you have a target date for town council?
Yeah, what's, what is the target?
The, the goal that's been communicated, communicated to me by the town manager is adoption before the end of the fiscal year. So I I will, I will say that, you know, i- if in another meeting this board doesn't act, council may move on without the recommendation. Cause again, it's not required.
If uh, if we come up with recommendations.
Well, they still don't have to accept. I mean, they got the final say so regardless.
I I just don't want to have some great ideas come in and then us just look at them one night and not really have a chance to ponder and consider. But I I would be okay with that if we are in.
Is it okay for people to email within the group?
That's what I was going to ask. Is it okay? Do we have a quorum if someone posts recommendations or is that, that's violating the the idea of the public? Yeah, okay. I I can, I can see, uh, Ms. Arley's a little bit uncomfortable with that. So that's um because i- ideally, people from the public would come and listen to the recommendations and offer public comment. And say, yeah, I like that recommendation and I don't.
I I would think that would be more of a town council myself. I tend to be more with Jim, but we're not ready to think.
You could email comments to Mike.
And those then.
And he could compile them and email them back out. Before, before the next meeting.
File and start a conversation.
Yeah, yeah. That that might get sticky.
So, well, well, when you email it, just make sure it goes directly to Mike. That way we're, we're not.
Jim, you know, I'm not very formal. If you're making that motion, that someone else does, I'll second that.
Well, okay, the motion is to postpone till next month first. And by next month, we email suggested comments to Mike. And then we bring them back and discuss it more the next meeting. I would make that motion.
So we have a motion?
Who else is seconding that, Brian? Ross?
And all those in favor of postponing for one month discussion on the bike and pedestrian plan.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. And we'll pick this back up next month and remind me that there is old business before we get to new business. I was already looking at the schedule. Hey, wouldn't that be awful? Good. Well, thank you for your, for your discussion and. Okay, new business. Let's talk about a meeting schedule. Uh, we have a copy of that in our packet. Pretty much the first Tuesday of the month, six thirty. We don't have a meeting scheduled in July. If we have a need arise, we could probably work with you, but it's kind of nice to have one month off. Are there any questions about this? Also, um, uh, any, any questions, any comments?
Just a little background for the new members. So the the basically council adopts the schedule in December of every year, and then it's up to the advisory boards to adopt their own schedule or make any adjustments. We didn't meet in January, and then we had some board changes. So that's why we're getting to it tonight. I did just want to highlight, uh, in the past two years since I've been here, uh, usually the meetings that are adjusted because they're immediately adjacent to holidays are the January meeting, which usually is right after New Year holiday and then the September meeting because usually that's right after Labor Day. Um, so again, it it it's up to the board, but just make your, your plans accordingly.
I think this document as presented is good.
So that's a motion?
I'll make a motion, yes.
And Mike has a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that passes. Alright. Next. Let's talk a little bit about conditional zoning.
Alright, so um, at the March tenth council visioning session, uh, our elected officials brought up and requested some information about conditional zoning and basically directed staff to start the text amendment process. So that's what uh, we're here to start tonight. Um, the town did attempt to do conditional zoning in twenty twenty-one, which was at the direction of uh the old town council members, but it was uh failed to be adopted in a February twenty-two uh continued public hearing. Um, but after further discussions about it, um, we're, we're bringing it up again for adoption. Um, I'm just going to go through my staff report, um, just for some background. And then I do have a short PowerPoint presentation, uh, just to review conditional zoning and how it works. Um, so again, right now, the town reviews development and land use proposals as three types, administrative approvals by staff, quasi judicial, which is special use permits, which for minor permits, go to the Board of Adjustment, major special use permits, go to town council. And then we have legislative decisions, which would be rezonings, um, a decision usually with a recommendation from the planning board, but with ultimate decision authority um, with town council, with few limitations on how the decision can be made. So zoning map amendments or rezonings are legislative decisions. And usually they modify a property zoning from one of our normal districts to the others. So that could be mixed use to low density residential, light industrial to general business, et cetera. And then each of those districts has its own list of permitted uses, uh, building setback requirements and other dimensional developmental requirements uh, that that apply to that zoning district. Um, in additional, uh, in addition, there's also uses allowed with a minor special use permit and major special use permit. So like for mixed use, as an example, we don't, we have no dimensional requirements for residential buildings. We do have building setbacks for commercial buildings. Um, mixed use allows almost all residential and commercial uses. But then there are more high-impact developments like a multifamily development that would require a major special use permit. So take all that and apply it to conditional zoning. So basically, conditional zoning provides the town greater flexibility to tailor regulations to a particular site or project um, that you won't fit within our normal zoning code. Um, so it's legal in North Carolina, but we have to establish that in our zoning ordinance in order for an applicant to be able to rezone from one of these normal base zoning districts to a conditional district. That process does not exist in our ordinance today. So with conditional zoning, it's a rezoning, but it's to an individual zoning district with a site-specific development plan and conditions just for that property, just for that project. So instead of rezoning to general business and going off of all the regulations in general business, we look at one property or a group of properties and that one development together. Um, and then obviously, conditions can be attached uh to that approval and usually are, hence the term conditional zoning. And those conditions uh usually must be related to conformance uh of the site with zoning and subdivision codes, securing the public health, safety, general welfare, et cetera. So in your packet tonight, uh, we have the proposed text amendment, which is attachment A. It has the purpose and intent of conditional zoning standards for an application. Uh, one item that I wanted to note that the planning board discussed in some detail the last time we went through this process was the qualifications for a prop, a property to even do a conditional rezoning. So again, we don't want this tool because it's a powerful tool to be overused. So how do we uh limit it to properties of a certain size or developments of a certain uh floor area, you know, commercial of fifty thousand square feet, I think industrial for a hundred and fifty thousand square feet? If a project or a property meets these requirements, they would be allowed to go through this process, whereas in a normal rezoning, anyone can apply to rezone from one base district to another. So again, um, the text outlines the standards and the code. So again, um, the text outlines the standards and the code. And again, in the, the draft ordinance, it also outlines what standards can or cannot be altered. Or changed. So this is, think of this really as almost like a negotiating tool between, uh, the town and a, a developer or a specific project.
Hmm.
Um. And then the ordinance also goes into application requirements, conditional zoning district conditions, and then limitations on any modifications of a final approval. Um. I went through the qualifications of a property, um.
Do you have a question if I can hear up?
Of course.
So if. We are to, if a re-zoning request comes before this board today. We are not allowed to discuss the proposed use on that property. Because we're looking at any conceivable use that would be allowed under that particular zoning.
Correct.
Under conditional zoning. The individual property use comes to us. Because we are, we would be recommending conditional zoning for that particular use or. Other uses that could be named at that time. Any other use would not be allowed. It would have to come back through the process. Any other use that would be otherwise allowed in the zoning that we are adopting for that. So if it's, uh. M- MR neighborhood commercial. Conditional zoning. Only the uses that are under that particular conditional zoning are allowed. Not every use that would be allowed under neighborhood commercial. Cause I remember one of the, one of the projects came for us. Very reasonable request, very reasonable. Potential business, but we couldn't really ask about that because we had to consider any other business that could go there. For the life of the, forever.
For re-zoning.
For re-zoning. But in the case of conditional zoning. Only the uses that are under that because it becomes a line item or a text amendment, text item. Um. If that property sells and someone wants to put something else in, that's not one of those uses that we determine at that point, it has to come back through the reason.
That's all exactly right.
It does not revert. It, it, that would run in, conditional would run in perpetuity.
Just like any re-zoning. Yeah. If, if someone wanted to do away with a conditional district, they would then have to rezone to either another conditional district. Amend the current conditional district they're in or rezone back to a base district.
They cannot unilateral and unilateral.
Correct.
So.
Oh.
So if I wanna build a slaughterhouse, I'm just using that and, uh. I come before this board and get a permit to build a slaughterhouse and then I change my mind. That, I can't change my mind. It's got to be, if I use it. It's got to be the slaughterhouse, right?
Are you talking about if it was a conditional re-zoning? Yeah. So I mean. Similar to.
It's specific.
Yeah, si- similar to a, a normal re-zoning, it would come before this board for review and recommendation and then would go to council for final approval. But you're correct. If, if as the developer or applicant, you said, I only want to do a slaughterhouse and here's my site plan and that's it.
Yeah, no, I take.
And if it's approved, you are beholden to just that.
So you're forfeiting your previous, whatever was allowed by right as well?
That's correct, but as.
Yeah, well, I, I guess that's my point. Yeah.
There you, you're, you're forfeiting.
Yeah.
And you're.
You're forfeiting all your other rights for this one thing. Yeah.
But as, as Chair Moore said, you can, you can build in additional uses into your conditional district. And I have an example of that in, in this PowerPoint, if, if you want to see it. So you could, you can, you can approach it very narrowly or, or you can make it more broad, but that would be dependent upon the applicant.
And you can also specify conditions. Because now if the re-zoning comes before us and if it meets certain standards and.
Yeah.
We can't necessarily impose.
If it's allowed by right.
Yeah, allowed by right, yeah.
But, but yeah, it's conditional zoning, then there may be reasonable conditions agreed to between the board, council and the, the developer, the person who comes asking.
There are very few rules in that situation though. It's a back and forth, right?
It's a back and forth negotiation.
That is allowed.
It, oh. That, that's why it's considered a powerful development tool because, for example, if someone wanted to come in and we have a mixed use zoning district. But we don't allow mixed use developments in any of our zoning districts in our core area, let's call it around Ingalls or any of the commercial intersections. Um, so you would need that tailored approach to, to achieve something like that.
I don't know of any developer that would pigeonhole themselves over one use.
And.
They're always gonna have, because it hurts their future about.
Exactly. And the, the other reason this came back up too is because, um. You know, we have multiple goals in our comprehensive plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-one. Uh, many of which, uh, not many, but some of which developers. Will not commit to without some type of negotiation. So this just opens the door for us to negotiate for maybe. A higher density in exchange for land preservation or in exchange for workforce housing. Um, the, there, there's a number of examples, but let me, let me go through the presentation real quick, just so we can get some additional clarity.
So again, we're just gonna go through the process. It's gonna be a little repetitive from the staff report, uh, but there's some. Varn. So again, council gave us direction that March tenth, staff had drafted this, that we're now planning for review. So again, we have our base districts, mixed use, MR thirty one, because that's all general does the site up here neighborhood department. Those are our conventional districts. Then there are conditional districts, districts, which is what we're talking about tonight. On the zoning district. Detective forms of buildings. Overly districts, which is what our board or overly districts, architectural requirements from purple building. From major roadway and uncharted districts would be, be, uh, hard to incorporate. Um, so this is important and I find it, uh, hit on us enough of when you go through this process, all the, the, uh, the point, all of those property owners that. Would be in a conditional district have to prove in writing that they want to be part of that. Make sure we're not, you know, someone's not, uh, some uses aren't being limited and if they don't approve it, you know, you don't end up in that type of situation. And similarly, the conditions that are agreed to ultimately between council and applicant also have to be writing, signed off on by both parties. Well, there's no way to hold either part, uh, to the conditions of. But here's a good example where you have, uh, and this is, uh, town manager comp provided this one this time. I was playing reverberant of art, but. You have a site specific plan for a specific project and it's a little small. But on the right here, you can actually see the description of this zoning district and then the actual permitted uses in this table. So think of it basically like the, the applicant, and again, this is all negotiated down in the developer applicant. But the applicant is the basically creating their own zoning district. With a list of permitted uses and it could be just one like a slaughterhouse or it could be a couple because they didn't want to do it. Um, but those standards are basically documented in the site plan and in this ordinance text that would create the necessary.
Realize I've been muted the whole time.
Uh-oh.
Wait here.
Uh.
Go ahead. I have a question, actually. Um, and you may get to this, but are we? Are we making a recommendation or adopting that every? Part of Mills River would be conditional zoning or just specific part?
This is, so this is a text amendment, which is to add something in our code to even allow for this process.
Currently no process.
No process.
It just doesn't blanket say that every.
Yeah, but no, we'll, we'll, the zoning map of the town will stay exactly the same. No one's property will be rezoned as part of this. It's just creating another re-zoning process. That could be used in the future.
Okay.
Michael, without this, the state allows for this, but without this here, they can't even be, they can't request it right now. There's no process.
Correct.
So as a point of reference, our, our other county, I know the county has this, uh, the other municipality.
Hendersonville does, Asheville does.
Asheville does, I know that.
How Laurel Park, Fletcher.
I, I don't believe they, yeah.
This is more common than not.
Yeah, Fletcher, I'm not aware of Laurel Park. I haven't looked at their ordinance, but based on the fact that they're mostly built out, I would, I would think it would. Be far fetched, they would have it, but, um, many municipalities across the state use this.
And it is powerful and flexible. I guess my one thought would be, you know. You know, that's a positive. A negative could be if somebody purchased property that was zoned residential. Um, but somebody else petitions, I guess the town council for conditional zoning right next to that with that harm the value. You know, of that property next door when they bought it under a certain zoning that surrounded them and then that changes. Okay.
Yeah. So think, that, think of it as, as a more complicated normal re-zoning. So we're going to go through the same procedures of, uh, mailing letters or putting a sign out. Um, a- and again, if that's something, you know, the board would like to see because this is more, is a higher impact development type or. Approval process potentially, you know, expanded public notice for this could be something that's considered. I mean, again, that, that's all up for this board and town council to consider, uh. You know, this is just the first look at this. Um. Anything else? So. So again, the, the purpose of conditional districts is to minimize development impacts, maximize development potential, uh, address unique sites. You know, we do have some properties with, uh. Portions of the property and flood plain in the area. We do have some sites with interesting topography. Um, and then really flexibility, but, uh. If, if someone needs a setback variance or a building height variance, they're still going to the board of adjustment. So you're, you're not going to be applying for a conditional re-zoning. To relieve yourself from just a couple items, uh, in our code or our development standards. Um, that would have to be go, go through the standard variance process to the board of adjustment. So the really important part that, you know, again, the planning board last time spent a good amount of time on that I wanted to delve into a little bit now is the qualifications for a property to even, uh. Qualify for this process. So I did include the language from last time, which was at the recommendation of the last planning board that considered this. They were looking at lot sizes of three acres or more. So you would have to have three acres or more of property to even qualify for this. And then, uh, they identified floor area, uh, qualifications for commercial and industrial development. So if I'm an industrial developer. I come in, I want to build a hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot warehouse. Um, I would qualify for this process if that was included as one of the, uh, qualifications.
Do you have an and between each full point or an or?
Uh, cur- currently the way it's written in the code, it's and, and, wait, what?
That's extremely limiting if it's ands.
Oh, no, sorry. It's or. No, I, any of them. And then.
Okay, sorry.
And then for residential and mixed use, uh, even though we identify those as specific conditional districts that could be created. We actually, I, after going through everything, we didn't create any qualifications for those. So that, that's something I just kind of left open for the planning board to consider. Another thing I've heard, you know, I, I know there's some concerns about modifying our density limitation. So a- again, a little background, right now, our townwide density across all twenty-two square miles is one dwelling unit per point six nine acres, thirty thousand square feet. For multifamily developments, it's one dwelling unit, sorry, four dwell. Am I getting that wrong? Four dwelling units per acre. Yeah. Um. But again, density is something that's a powerful negotiating tool with developers and applicants in terms of the town getting something out of it and then achieving some of our other comprehensive plan goals. And through reading some of this research, another thing that's legal to do is to limit. Conditional zoning to specific areas of the town. And the most, the best way to do that is to tie it to our future land use map. So that's another option I put in here that I just wanted to throw out for consideration. I'll go through these maps and then I'll stop again for discussion. So we put these together, uh, last time. This is basically a map of Mills River and it includes all parcels in pink that are three acres or more. So if you went with the three acres or more. Qualification standard for someone to apply through this process, that's the amount of coverage in the town or the properties that would qualify. If we go to five acres or more, then obviously we're eliminating some of the parcels. And then if we go to ten acres or more. You know, we're really only looking at some of the larger parcels in town. So again. We're going from less restrictive to more restrictive.
A little in the weeds here, but would. Is there a, a, a point in time where you mark those acreage or can you do needs of recombination and change the parcels?
Good question. Um, in theory, if, if you, yeah, you could recombine.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So if a developer.
There's not, not a stop for that.
No, and, and I mean, that's, that's just, uh. The private market. If, if a developer wants to buy up all of the land around a two acre parcel to make ten acres, that's up to them, yeah. Um, and then the last one I threw in, which was not something considered last time was tying something to the future land use map that's in our comprehensive plan. So again, this map was in, adopted as part of our, uh, twenty forty comprehensive plan, making Mills River. And again, this was just a suggestion thrown out, but the community center district is basically identified for more, some of our more high intensity land uses. And if you look at this table here, uh, you can see community center, the desirable uses encompasses basically the most, everything from retail restaurants, office duplexes, townhomes, apartments, et cetera. It does not include, uh, in- industrial or any heavy industry. But again. Community center that the description lends itself to, to what it is. So going back, if. If the planning board wanted to make this a qualification and basically limit conditional zoning to certain geographic areas of the town. Tying it, you know, basically saying a property can only go through the conditional re-zoning process if they're identified as a community centered district on our future land use map would be one legal way to do that.
So that, that could help.
The, the concern that. Places where it's residential, farms, et cetera. Wouldn't necessarily be, that wouldn't, this wouldn't work there. It's not going to be a tool that's going to be used there. It's not going to be, um. Way up north Mills River Road, conditional zone to.
Being spot.
Right. It's not going to be, yeah.
I'm a big fan.
As opposed to not, spot zoning is different. Where one particular, my understanding, one particular piece of property is zoned different from all the surrounding. And it's illegal if it's done capriciously by the town. Say, Jeff, we don't like you.
But you just said. This is, that wouldn't be. Community center. Approach is legal.
Right.
I believe you, Jeff. That's not, you're in a spot zoning investigation.
I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but we, we're, we are tying, uh, a land use process to a map in our comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Um. The, some of the school of government guidance said you could tie it to other geographic areas, but that's a little too loose for me to feel comfortable with. So by identifying. Properties in these future land use districts, I, I think it's the strongest approach. Now, I, I will say that does not mean that an applicant can't come in and ask for their property to be re-designated on the future land use map.
The community center map could change, but this would follow in this example.
Say that again.
The, the, the map where the community center is, that map could change.
It could get bigger.
Correct.
It could get bigger, it could get smaller, it could change. And, and this would run with it, if, in this example.
If, if this qualification is adopted, yeah.
And it could be community center, commercial crossroads and industrial employment could be those three.
Well, existing maps is kind of one of the things you were, you were looking for as far as legal.
I just think tying it to a, to a plan document is, is the safest versus, versus us saying. I mean, in theory, you could say, okay, we don't want development or we don't want to, you know, we're worried about allowing. Density in some of our outlying agricultural areas. So in order to protect that, another way you could do it is. I mean, if we had a downtown main street, just draw a two mile circle around it. But since we don't have that and we have these kind of separated commercial nodes, this, this seemed the best way to do that.
But it's not just density also.
Oh, no.
I mean, it could be that. There is a use. Uh. And one of the things I'm familiar with is the venue when that came through the venue of Mills Rivers near me. Um, there really wasn't a zoning that, that really fit. There really wasn't anything that completely fit. Without, without a complete re-zoning. However, if, if conditional zoning were available at that point. They could have been conditionally zoned for a use that would allow their, what they're doing. But then it couldn't be changed to something else. It would be used by right in that zone. If they said, well, we're not going to do this anymore, then it would either revert back or it would have to go back through the zoning process. So. Me as a, a neighbor would have had that comfort that sure, we can rezone it and then this use totally fits, but that's the only use that can go there. And if it. Changes, then it has to be rezoned. changes, then it has to be rezoned.
And any of
Given us as neighbors some protection, you know, there there really isn't available.
So in a commercial crossroads near somewhere where near where I live, but if there if there's somebody who wants to put something there and every person in the community is opposed to it, but it meets all of the current zoning requirements, there's not really any flexibility without a conditional zoning.
Correct. I think I heard you right.
Yeah, sorry. In other words,
Saying if it's if it's allowed by right.
If it's allowed by right.
They could complain all they want, but
Exactly.
But if we have conditional zoning, we have the flexibility to
Request.
Request certain things. Because they would have to request specifically at that point.
Well,
Exactly, outside of what's
If it's a use by right, they're still going to get it. Now, there are now maybe wrong about this, but I believe Henderson County has conditional zoning for uses that are allowed in that. It's it's not a special use permit, but it is a conditional. Maybe maybe what it is, they have certain districts that are already CZ. So that in the CZ, you have to go through the conditional zoning process. I've got a couple of of developments that I'm working with that are going through the CZ process. And they're not really rezoning it. It's just that they have to go through in order to build it there.
Certain things trigger, and we have those as well that are like the independent of this, of of, you know, ten, you know, a a development of ten homes or more, whatever it might be that triggers DOTD. So this would all this conditional zoning
And would only kick in if they wanted to do something that was different than what their rights were under the current zoning.
Or else there would be no need for them to spend all the time.
Then it would be up to the planning board to determine if that is a use that would fit. You know, in the context of the neighborhood, then it would be up to council to ultimately approve it as a conditional zoning. And
That's a great question. So this would be advisory?
Just like
It would still be advisory.
Okay.
And again, that just to this example, this is just an example I drew up today and threw out, you know, there are other use districts that can be included to make it less restrictive. I I just pulled out community center just because those are our commercial nodes.
So let me get something clear. Say we take community centers. And I come with we're if I'm looking at the map right, this is part of the community center on the map. So I say I bought the property next door here at the David Farm. I want to put in my slaughterhouse. Ever do I understand this correctly, that everybody surrounding has to agree?
No. So only only the property owners that are in the can or proposed conditional district have to agree. We would send out normal public notice letters to everyone surrounding, but I would I was just saying before that all property owners, because you could in theory get five different parcels together, put them in a conditional zoning district and have, you know, a development of this here, development of that there. But all property owners have to agree to that and to the conditions. And I was just making a point or or agreeing with the point you made about not having a property owner in a conditional district and having their rights for development and a normal zoning district overrun.
Okay. Well, one other question, a little bit off that. So I would ask the question, one that comes to mind. If this is approved, what effect will this have on staff's workload? Will it increase it or will it help?
It it depends how many applications we get. I I would put this on the level of a special use permit, maybe a little more workload than that, just because I I would expect if someone did apply under this process, there would be a lot of back and forth because again, it is really open negotiation almost between the landowner, the applicant, the developer and the town. You know, for so the town can get what, you know, the town wants, and then the developer can also get what they want to make a viable project. But I I I would just equate it to a, sorry, a major special use permit similar to the town homes on Jeffers Road that I think went to the planning board for a preliminary meeting and then had maybe one or two planning board meetings and then a couple council meetings.
Two or three planning board meetings and then the council, yes.
But this this would not be where we choose a particular parcel and say, you know, that ought to be zoned this. And we as a town start, it has to be the 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 person who's buying it, who initiates and says, I really want to build this, but I can't do it. But here's here's a zoning that would allow it. And then it's the determination is made, well, this particular use is okay in the context of the surrounding property. So that is a particular use that is zoned for. It's that is the only allowed use unless they have a list. Well, this, 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 and this, but it's only those. And we don't run the risk of rezoning something that then allows a by right use later that is totally inappropriate.
So Michael, would it be normal to have a a process for not a not a property owner, but a potential property owner? In other words, someone purchasing got on the multi-use property like you gave a great example, say they're considering Fletcher and they're considering here, they want to have that conditional conversation before they close on the deal.
Yeah, part of the due diligence.
Part of the due diligence in that period, are are they allowed or is the property owner going to have to submit?
The property owner would have to agree in some form. So whether they notarize or put have an affidavit that they're designating someone as their appointed agent. I mean, that would be possible, but we would need clear documentation in writing that the property owner
That's what the county does. They have a designated agent for
And we, I think we have a similar one as well, because oftentimes you'll have a law, a real estate attorney or a a developer or contractor act on behalf of a property owner.
Mike, and you did say the surrounding properties would have to agree to that.
No. So the only properties that would have to agree are the ones in the conditional district. So if 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 I have one piece of property, let's say I have two pieces of property, it's me and my neighbor. And we want to do a conditional zoning district. Me and my neighbor would both have to agree in writing that we want to be part of that conditional district. But all the neighbors around us don't have to agree. Now they'll get public notice letters and they can come to a meeting, you know, like a normal rezoning hearing in front of council, we have open public comment. And because it's a legislative process and not a quasi judicial process, like a special use permit, council can really is very free in the decisions they can make and the reasonings behind that. They could say, well, I've heard from these citizens that are against it, they live around it, and I don't want that. It's not like a a special use permit like with the town homes. Where with a special use permit, if the developer meets all our standards, we have to issue the permit. They will sue us otherwise because we've 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 put out in our code that, look, you're doing a multifamily development and we have all these extra standards you have to meet. But if they meet those, we're we're legally obligated to issue the permit. And that was what happened with the town homes on Jeffers Road. This process, you could have one person come up in front of council and say, I've lived here twenty years. I don't want to see this here. And every single person on council could vote no, just because they heard that.
Or you
Or, yeah, sorry.
Even even in your example, if they met all of the criteria, because it's
But that's the thing, there there is no criteria. The criteria is what we're negotiating between, you know, council and the planning board.
Convince us to say yes.
And the applicant.
From a standard zoning with a list of criteria to
Exactly. Yeah. Quick segue so into the standards that can be varied. So so right now, as the ordinance is written, these are the standards that can be changed again with negotiation and approval from the town. So it would be the the list of uses, lot size, density, building height, parking requirements, landscaping setbacks, open space requirements, signage, and then number of buildings or uses. Now, this does not exempt you from water, you know, any state requirements. So we're charged by the state of North Carolina to enforce our watershed ordinance and protect our water, our drinking water supply. That cannot be varied for any person for any reason. Stormwater requirements, if you're in certain areas of the town that are outside of our watershed, you have to apply through the state for phase two post-construction stormwater control. That's not going to change. Same with sediment erosion control, our steep stream buffers. Water supply wastewater permitting, we're still going to require approval from City of Hendersonville Water or whoever it may be. And then on down on the list driveway permits, et cetera. So the this allows modification and flexibility to town standards, but not to other standards.
Just to be clear, going back to your example, if if my word standard zoning and somebody meets all the criteria, but one an individual from the public comes before the town council and said, I don't want this. And council says, unfortunately, they've met all the criteria, we have to issue the permit. Where where if we have conditional, under your example, we have the flexibility for one person or more, obviously, to oppose it. And the town council then would have flexibility
Exactly.
To go with, okay.
And that
Public willing to willing to participate, public, the opportunity, you know, to have more say.
And and it may be just a piece of property along the edge of a zoning. It's not quite in. It it's say it's along the edge. And a person is looking at buying that property and building something. It's not allowed there currently. But there's another zoning that's very close that allows that. And it appears that, you know, that is a use that would work there. It'll work here. It won't work over there in the middle of that zoning. It would work here. We would have the ability to say, okay, we will give you a conditional zone. They have to ask for it. But we could recommend that it be conditionally zoned for this other, say, neighborhood commercial with this particular use. Not any use that would fall under that. So it that gives the flexibility of that property. It adds more value to that property because now it can be used for other things, but it would have to be something that fits. And if it doesn't fit, then council can say, or we even
Where we say, oh, that that just doesn't fit. We don't recommend it. Council can say, no, that doesn't work. We're not going to recommend it. I think where the density comes in,
that could help. They could say, well, you know, to to make this work, we really need X number of units. We can't get that under this zoning, but we could get it under this zoning. Could we conditionally zone for that? And if it fits, you know, that's that's a tool. And as part of those conditions, they might give more green space. They might give right of way. You know, additional right away in the future for something. I mean, it's it's the give and take.
Um, so so going forward, so there's there's two options in the proposed ordinance for the the process. Option one, kind of like the example that was given out a couple minutes ago, would be a preliminary plan. So if you if a developer had like a contract to purchase a property and maybe had a year to get their approvals together, this would maybe be an option for them where they would establish the district by going through the normal process, get council approval, but for a more general concept plan. And then depending upon whether they got approval or not, they would have two years to come back and submit the final, you know, full detailed construction drawings for final review and for a zoning permit. The other option would be if, you know, a developer is going all in from the start and said, we bought this and we want to build this. And they just come in, you know, guns blazing with full engineered plans, everything ready to go. That that is usually less likely because usually developers are going to protect that money and not want to have that expenditure all at the front end. But a- again, it is wise to have two options just in case. So just reviewing those again, so for option one, we would have an application would come in, we would have staff review, just like a normal rezoning. We would planning board, planning board review and recommendation. Then town council review and approval, but again, just of a preliminary plan. Then the developer, think of it like the legacy as an example, even though that was a special use permit, town council approved that special use permit with with a concept plan in place. Now, that was approved in oh eight, so there have been some minor modifications made to that plan since then. And that's where the developer or property owner would come back with the final engineered plans, which is what the legacy is doing right now, which would be reviewed by staff to make sure all the conditions are met. And then a zoning permit would be issued for construction. Uh, option two, obviously much shorter because you skip all the preliminary stuff. You go from application, staff review, just straight through the planning board to town council and then to building. Again, if they had all the detailed engineered drawings done at the time they were ready to start the process. Then we covered all this already. Um, here's a good example of a preliminary plan, kind of like the one we saw before. So again, you can see it's kind of concept level. But we know what is where. We know, you know, maybe there's a recreational facility here. We know where the buildings are about approximately. We know where green space is going to be. Here's kind of a zoomed in version, you know, we know what parking lots might look like, and we might have preliminary counts for the number of parking spaces, you know, landscaping, et cetera. Now, the option two, again, you're going to go to fully engineered drawings where you have, you know, everything engineered out to the T, almost ready for construction. So again, there's a a lot more time and money invested in that from the applicant side, which again is why it's wise to have the the two options for the process. I I mentioned modifications with the legacy, actually with the with the legacy special use permit, there was something built in to the special use permit that allowed for staff to make minor modifications to the plan because guess what? From two thousand and eight to twenty twenty three, things have changed and they did need to make some adjustments to their plan. Usually, and and again, this is all up for discussion, all up for for change of the planning board sees fit. Usually minor modifications by staff are limited to ten percent, so no more than a ten percent change in any standard. Anything above that or any change in the uses of the property or, you know, building locations would be a considered a major amendment, and that would have to go basically back through the whole process over again to change the original conditional zoning approval. And then if they wanted to, a- again, similarly, just change the the conditional district and do something else, they could either do a text amendment to actually change like the list of permitted uses in that district. Or they could just amend the whole conditional zoning district to change it to whatever they wanted. So again, I know that's a lot. So in summary, a conditional district is just another type of rezoning. Uh, one thing the board should look at is what types of properties should be qualified or what qualifications the town wants to set to limit this tool. Once it's adopted, it would be a standalone ordinance. I didn't talk about that. So if a conditional zone goes through to adoption, it would literally be in our zoning book and would be conditional district mixed use twenty three oh one, and it would be in our code. And again, it's all up for negotiation. There can be optional conditions and required conditions as part of the approval, and we've got the two approval processes. That was a lot, so.
They're progressively identify they're numbered like that? They're not a zone. They're 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 own.
That's exactly right, because they they are creating, uh, you know, their own unique zoning district just
No, but you assign that's theirs.
Correct.
Follows that that property, that particular or those properties that are listed.
Michael, curious, did Daniel share share anything with you how this was this in in regard, if any, positive, negative?
Um, I mean, I mean, from the from the staff side and from the the planning side, I mean, it's it's mostly positive because, you know, options are open that, you know, usually you don't have in the ordinance.
And Mike pointed out, it it provide it gives more voice to us.
Well, and I
That I could think of is 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 that this is for everything, because the town council changes. You know, that same situation, exact same situation could be presented to a new town council and they could say, no, there's not a precedent.
Correct.
Whatever happens in that situation, there's something
Right.
Each would each would stand alone as as an individual project. But no, you're you're exactly right. Is is there's more latitude for the town to make decisions and to ask for things. The the I think the best example is the special use permit with the town homes on Jeffers Road because you know, there was nothing else we could ask for and nothing else we could do because our ordinance said do XYZ, they did it, and we had to, we had to issue the the permit. Or or, you know, town council was legally obligated to approve that because we met the the applicant met the conditions that are set out in our code. With this, everything's on the table. And again, my my role and and my job is to make sure, you know, we meet the goals of the town comprehensive plan, which was adopted by council, which was informed by a lot of community input. And there are goals in that plan, like having diverse housing options that I would just say, based on market conditions, will not happen in this town if we don't have items like density on the table. And again, I I know the the D word density is, you know, one that can spark a a number of views in certain people and, you know, oftentimes A number of views in certain people and, you know, oftentimes, you know, in low uh in Mills River, which is a traditional agricultural, low density community. Um, you know, i- it's almost feared, but you know, i- if we want to serve uh different demographics and achieve some of these goals in our comprehensive plan. That is going to be one of the strongest negotiating tools to have on the table. Um, but again, uh, I I like it as well because it gives council the power to either say yes or say no, or really any reason they see fit.
A lot of times if we come in, a person maybe, we we get public comment from people that are angry or excited about something and it's quite right. You hear them out, you nod and tell them thank you, and then you issue the town permit anyway, this this gives some, hey, say, there's a gray area.
Well, and that is hard for the planning board because, I mean, a- again, most of the developments you see come before you are going to be major subdivisions. So again, residential subdivisions of eleven lots or more or any commercial development or subdivision of land. But if they meet our subdivision requirements, that that's all we can ask for.
Those precedents are in place, though, my point is each of these situations have not created precedent.
That's exactly right.
And if if it's the um, the use that it just makes sense, but it's not allowed under the current zoning, but it fits. So if there's commercial property across the street next door over here, this is just the only residential property and yet. It's not being used as residential and someone says, well, you know, I'd like to buy it and build a warehouse or something smaller. Whatever, and there's a a case I have in mind and it it made sense, but one of the things we had to consider is once that was rezoned. Anything that would fit under that zoning could go there in the future. It may not always be of the the warehouse or the whatever. In ten years, it may change and then because it has been rezoned, it's rezoned forever. And anything that is along that list of uh permitted uses, used by rights can go there. So it's like, well, you know, we need to really think about this, is this going to be, are we okay with what can go there in the future? Under conditional zoning, we could say, okay, we will conditionally zone you as that. And this is the only thing you can put there, and if you change it, it's got to come back through the process.
And Jeff, you may, or sorry, Mr. Moore, you you may know more more about this than uh than I do. But I believe in Asheville or or cities that are really trying to, I will, control development is the wrong word, but um have additional oversight. They actually direct certain high impact projects to have to go through conditional rezoning so town council can have that oversight. Um, hotel developments, I think, is one, and I think uh. Where when I first moved here, I was in an apartment complex in downtown Asheville and they added an additional phase and I know that went through conditional zoning just based on the unit count.
Yes.
So um, it it it's a tool that's used a lot of different ways, but um that there are benefits to it. And again, this is just the first draft of text, we basically took. All the feedback from last time that was incorporated into the proposed ordinance. Um, read through it again, made some minor tweaks, made sure everything was good and have represented, presented it to you tonight. So open to discussion, modifications, everything is on the table.
I have one question. Of the two options you pointed out, to option one and option two. Under option one, we go through all this, is still not finalized, does it come back to us again?
So that that was something that was brought up, I think, in one of the public hearings with council when we went through this in twenty one, twenty two. The way the ordinance was originally written and we mirrored it off uh some other examples from other municipalities. Is it would come back for staff review, so just like the legacy example with the special use permit. And with their site plan, it comes back to staff or review and then issuance of the zoning permit. But I I had heard, I think, in one of our previous meetings, um, that the planning board could also serve that role. So if that's something you'd like to see, we can make that.
I would if we're gonna, if we go with the option one, we're not going to be going with, giving them a choice, all right?
We are.
Yeah. Oh, you're talking about giving them both?
Yeah, because again, there, I mean, oftentimes the developer will not have everything engineered out. Because it's just, it's just a lot of cost and a lot of work.
Well, I understand that, but uh, my, of course, my first thought on that is, okay, commit. Or or move, get out of the way and leave us alone.
By right, they're definitely not going to spend that money.
Yeah, so the.
Well, I I know.
They would have the option to choose whether they want.
Yeah, but I, okay, if if we're going to have two options for them, I would definitely want to come back to the plan board.
For for the final review of the of the fully engineered plan.
Yes, right.
Got it. I'll add that change in, or does everyone, sorry, does everyone else?
That just give the public more chance, you know, and that's that's where I'm going. You may wonder where I'm going with all this, but I want the public to get involved and then when they, like, sometimes they come up and they're complaining of this. And I, my question is always, did you vote? No, you don't be complaining.
So there's been a lot of, a lot of things tonight, but a lot of information on this. I think, yeah, I would certainly entertain a motion of any, the typical three options, approve tonight, talk about it some more or say no tonight. So I guess those are the three options I.
Michael, the community center was a suggestion of yours, that's not already in the, as a, or is that?
No, it's not.
Okay, you had mentioned you put it in today.
Sorry, I put it in the PowerPoint today.
Yeah, okay.
Um, yeah, but that's not in the ordinance as it is, so that's something.
I don't think we talked enough about that, I I really like that.
Yeah, I like that.
I I do too, I think that needs.
Yeah, that's why.
Then we're not going to run into the state, I know the state sometimes frowns on spot zoning, we're not going to get in a problem on spot zoning with this, all right?
No, I mean, when you, again, even when we do rezonings of just one property, um, and again, the the planning board usually doesn't go through this. It's council that has to do uh spot zoning reasonableness statements and they have to basically analyze a s- a certain number of items. I can't remember them all off the top of my head, but, you know, what are the impacts on neighboring property owners, what is the impact on the applicant? Uh, you know, how do the uses compare with the area, et cetera? But basically, it's a more detailed level of analysis in the public record. That council has looked at the spot zoning issue and as long as they've considered those specific items, it protects the town, you know, not completely. But it does protect the town from a spot zoning challenge. We would go through that exact same process with conditional zoning. So if someone came in, even if it was two properties, but since they're being zoned differently from the area around it. Um, when and if that application got to council, we would go through the same spot zoning reasonableness analysis.
Okay.
Those are the two things, Jim, I like your point, come back to the planning board.
Yeah, right.
I really like the, but tagging the the map that's already been identified, community center.
We would recommend approval in that first time they come or disapproval, recommend approval, it would go to council. Council would either approve it or not, and if council approves it, then at some point in time in the future, they would come back to us. And then we would have the ability to make sure that they're doing what was promised or.
Between preliminary.
What the original intent was for us, yeah.
We would have uh these, the final plans and yes, this meets the intent of that or not.
Excuse me, did you, council, bring it up again?
No, no, well, not unless it's identified in the procedures in this document.
Lonnie, you got all the words put together, that's a lot of words.
I'm ready for a recommendation.
You have to have a statement of consistency to company this.
Oh, are we doing a recommendation now?
Should.
I I'm not saying we are, I just.
Right, right.
Digging at Lonnie over here.
The, if we're, um, if we want to, uh, w- we need, do we need to talk about it more? Do we need to look at the text amendment and approve that text amendment pretty much word for word? You know, have we had an opportunity to do that with the knowledge gained tonight?
Are we voting then just on the energy centers? Right now, he's just asking if you have any more.
Yeah, we have more input or we want to.
That's my question, I mean, is it, is it, is that the file format to vote on where it's just the users?
I.
So there's options.
It it could be if we wanted it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
The the board can identify specific changes and and if it's the board's pleasure, can vote to approve something with those changes incorporated. And then that would be taken to council. But we also, um, per state law, uh, the planning board for rezonings and zoning text amendments can have up to sixty days total, basically for. Or up to thirty additional days for consideration. So basically, this can be tabled for a maximum of one other meeting before it will automatically go to council.
We have that one more opportunity.
If if we feel we need that, if there's a motion to approve tonight with conditions on file, please do, yes.
Yeah, my thought is, and I don't know how easy it's to pull up the community centers and the other map. But I would think not only the community centers, but any of the other named commercial areas, we, do we want to expand it to those? That, you know, my, that would be my recommendation and I don't have a map, I don't know where.
The R M U is bigger than that and it allows commercial.
Let me pull it up real quick.
Sorry. Can it be amended later if we just go with community centers now?
So the the action before this board tonight is to recommend approval of the entire ordinance language, so everything in attachment A. So it would not just be about the qualifications being community center. Um, it would, it would be the whole ordinance, that didn't work.
But it could be, could be the ordinance with the communities, yeah, community center recommendation added.
I guess my question is, if we, if we adopt the ordinance as written, can we expand it to other areas other than just the community center later on?
So yes, if there were another text amendment, so the planning board, let me think through this. If you wanted to move forward and recommend approval of the ordinance with the qualification of the community center district tonight, you could. But that recommendation and uh recommendation for approval would be brought to council in its current form or as the board sees fit.
Within thirty days to them.
Well, I'm just saying, if that action were taken tonight.
Right.
But the planning board also has the power to initiate text amendments and has in the past. So this board could initiate a text amendment in the future to modify this again. But a- again, ultimate approval authority would rest with council. Um, but I mean, it would just be my recommendation that if you're not sure about the districts or, you know, if if you want additional information. Um, I'm I'm happy to get that for you.
So there isn't another, and it's one of your questions, expanded to the commercial district because there's not really. Well, commercial crossroads and or industrial employment, that's all I, I thought it was.
So, yeah, you're going to want to look at the, this use table here. Um, so again, community center is going to be the future land use, that's going to be the most intensive, I guess I would describe it. Um, not including industrial. And then community crossroads would be the the second most intensive.
Do you have that overlaying that?
Yeah.
Community crossroads. Yeah, so we do it right there.
So it's these smaller commercial nodes. So that that would include these areas, so this would be the intersection with Ray Hill and Boylston. And that one I is too far away from me to see.
South Forge Mountain, is it? Long view.
Brick yards down here, so it might be.
This is like Forge Mountain.
Forge Mountain Dash area, yeah. And then the other category, but again, this is more residential focused, is mixed residential, which is in the yellow.
Yeah.
But again, uh, focused on, I would just say, a diversity of residential uses, so not just single family homes, but uh duplexes. And then obviously, uh, the last one, and you could include this as well, you know, uh, our light industrial. Or sorry, industrial and employment designated areas are up here. So, you know, i- if the planning board wanted to keep the option open for a conditional zoning for an industrial development, you could include that as well. Because again, there there are not that many areas designated as that and they're mostly around uh future, they're mostly located around existing industry. So again, you'll see here, industrial and employment, the desirable uses are light industry and office.
That's not necessarily a zoning, community crossroads, it's not a zone.
No, it's a land use category of our future land use map, part of the comprehensive plan.
Mine too.
Oh.
Okay.
Now, uh, some of the school of government guidance said, you know, you can also limit it to specific zoning districts. So you could say only light industrial zone property can rezone to a conditional district. But that's a little bit more of a gray area.
Get too specific.
Yeah, well, a- and in my mind, when you rezone, you know, um, I may be in a light industrial zone and it would make absolutely no sense for me to go to MR thirty residential. But I still have a right to apply for that. Um, so I, I I have some hesitations just personally about um. Limiting it by zoning district because I think that.
I I like the geographic area better.
And then, and then if if there are occasions that there, if it comes up in other areas. And that needs to be changed or expanded to something that could be looked at.
And those, those amendments would be initiated from.
Either from us or council.
Before or after council finalizes, something we could, could we, could we bring a text amendment to them after they've approved this? We have to have those amendments in before they do apply.
I mean, I I would say if if you're able to work through it in another meeting, it'd be desirable, you know, since, since we're going through the process now. Um, I would say, get get in what your desires are. Um, but o- of course, a text amendment can be initiated at any time in the future, but we can't, we can't interrupt the the current process. So if there's a recommendation for approval and this moves to council, um, by that point, there there's no additional input from the planning board.
Not formal yet, Jeff, but I think we can kick it to the next meeting myself.
Okay, oh, is there, is there someone who would like to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'm, I make a motion that we move this to the next meeting.
I'll second.
Say your name.
Lonnie.
Our labor staff, keep going.
And all in favor of moving it to the next meeting?
Uh huh.
And.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir, thank you for all that, all that information, it's a lot of information. Okay, last thing, uh, the land preservation committee. Council would like to have two delegates from the planning board, this is a good opportunity to have some input in this area. It's very important to to preserve land. Um, are there, is there anyone that would like to volunteer? It's a whole lot easier if you volunteer to be appointed and if everyone else takes a step back and whoever's going to stand up front.
Well, Jeff, you know, I came to you in advance, this is something that's near and dear to me. Yeah, incredibly, uh, you know, important to me as a, as a resident, as a father, as a son, what do you mean to put up another development over there? Um, a real estate background, uh, whether I get appointed or not, aside for a second, I care enough that I've already reached out to the peoples that I know. Uh, you know, we've got representative office, center of love is office, working with Mark Williamson, who he is. Uh, Karen with Conservancy Carolina, bring them in in these meetings, whether I'm sitting over there or over here. But it's something that's a, a lot of moving parts and it's going to have a little conflict with the the D word. But it is what it is.
I would be interested.
I'd like to participate, I know we're putting up two.
We're putting up two, is there anyone else who would like to be? Okay, uh, since we have two volunteers for two positions, is there someone who would like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Ross and Mr. Foster?
Make a motion with. Mine, I say.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Hi. Okay, from the category, be careful what you ask for.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
No, I think y'all will do fantastic, thank you so much for being willing to to keep volunteering. I've heard it said, when you volunteer, you volunteer to volunteer and y'all certainly are living up to that, so thank you very much. Are there any additional questions, have we had any public comment come through or anything?
N- nothing tonight.
Thank you, thank you for a long meeting. Uh, I'd like to think that not all meetings will be this long, but this is, this is important and thank you for your time and your dedication in the discussion. If.
I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
I discussed this, I think, with you before, but I'd like for us to sort of have a policy of public comment. We always open up with public comments, but I would like for us to, on this board, to have a policy to. If somebody's here to comment on a specific item that's on the agenda, reserve their comments to that time.
I agree, I agree, and also, and the, at the end, I don't know if we need to put it as an agenda item and I know it's redundant. But sometimes someone may come here and hear things that spur them to want to make a comment. And that closing, you know, as we're getting ready to leave, if they have something to add, I'd like to give them that opportunity.
Yeah.
I don't know if that needs to be on the agenda or, um, you know, I've seen it done in other boards that I've visited and been part of, they have at the end, because sometimes you may come here just to, to listen and be part of it. And then that comment comes at the end.
Right.
And it may not be a specific item. And it's probably going to be the exception rather than the rule, so, okay.
Having said that, I make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor to adjourn? Thank you. Thanks, everyone.